Twenty five, it's called a order with, please call the role.
Mayor Kaufman?
Here.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Gardner?
Here.
Councilmember Hancock?
Here.
Councilmember Jurenski?
Here.
Councilmember Kasaw?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Murillo? Mayor Pro Tim Sundberg?
Here, sorry.
There's no mayor, mayor's update, are there any issue updates? Saying none, is there any objection to moving the consent calendar forward? Item number two A through two P?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
I'd like to pull two A and two P, and I think two P should not have been put on consent because it's an ordinance, but maybe I'm wrong.
Two A and two P? Further discussion?
Mayor?
That's it. Uh, Councilmember Hancock?
I'd like also to pull two B.
Very well. Further discussion?
Can I just go ahead and ask my question on two A? Or do we need to approve the consent calendar?
No, because you, uh, you've already pulled it. So we're gonna go ahead and prove, approve the consent calendar minus those issues and then we'll come back to those issues.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is there any objection to moving the consent calendar forward out of number two C through two O? Uh, seeing none, then uh, th- those items of the consent count will move forward. Now please hit the top to under number two A.
Item two A is consideration to appoint one member to the Civic Engagement Commission.
Uh, discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, please.
Yeah, I just, I don't, thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. Um, is it in the backup it says there's fourteen vacancies, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how many positions in total are there?
So, Councilmember Bergen, we actually appointed about ten members a couple weeks ago, and this one was lagging in the process, and so we added it. Um, so now we'd be up to eleven members on that commission.
And how many are supposed to be on it?
I do not know offhand, but we can get back to you on that one unless Katie knows.
Katie, do you know?
Councilmember Bergen, this is Cecilia. There's fifteen members on the commission.
Okay.
Um, there's two vacancies and these two pending. So right now there's four vacancies with these two pending.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Um, further discussion? Uh, I've seen no, I've seen no further discussion. Is there any objection to moving item number two A forward? Seeing none, item number two A will move forward. Um, item number two B, uh, consideration to appoint one member to the Royal Human Relations Commission. Uh, discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Hancock?
My question was, I thought that this committee was in jeopardy of being dismantled. So while we appoint someone on a committee that we're, we may terminate.
Uh, very well. Um, the, it is being rewritten. Uh, the ordinance is being rewritten and will come before council, but I fully understand if you wanna suspend making any appointments until council makes a decision.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, is there, uh, um, I'm gonna have to go back. Is there any objection to moving item number two B forward? Councilmember Hancock objects. Uh, further objections, uh?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Jurski?
I'm sorry, we were talking about item two B?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a concern here in looking over um, the qualifications for this individual, looks like David Francis. I'm not sure if it's Francis David or David Francis, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know how you guys send us these things. Um, but list your interests and activities. Um, queer activism, supporting single parents, neurodiversity, human rights, education, mental health advocacy, environmental justice, income equality, equal access to
That's
resources. That's what we're talking about? This individual, appointing this individual to this committee?
Well, I think that where we're at right now is just suspending making any decision, uh, because council has not made a decision as to whether or not, uh, retain, to retain the Human Relations Commission in what form it will be retained in. Uh, one of the, uh, and I'm, so I'm in the process of rewriting it, so I, I support Councilmember Hancock's uh, motion to suspend, uh, until we do make a decision what to do with the council.
I, I
What to do with the commission?
Yeah, I, I will, um, I will support that as well. I just wanted to further point out though, that we don't get to see the applicants, we don't get to see the applications that come in. Um, it goes through the Human Relations Commission, um, right now, and then they put it forward who they would like to appoint. And in reading over this individual's background, um, I think a lot of that to my point, a hundred times over about this commission, um, s- some of it I certainly support. Um, some of it very much goes against what the majority of this council believes in, and I think it further strengthens my argument that this is uh, a commission that is an activist, uh, and an activism commission. So when you guys bring this back forward, I hope to see one of the changes made. Uh, one of the major changes is that we appoint, and, and I think that that's the only way that I will support it. So I just wanted to make that statement.
And I'm looking at that this time, but the question, that is not the question before us. Question before us is uh, whether simply to suspend making a decision on any appointments until council's made a decision what
I understand, I understand, Mayor, but you do a lot of things without our input, and I just wanted to add my input, so thank you.
Councilmember Bergen?
Uh, yeah, I support suspending it as well for those reasons, and um, will we be able to see it, Mayor, before it goes forward?
Well, you're gonna have to vote on it, so it's gonna go through the same process of
So it'll go to study session?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Uh, is there any objection, uh, to suspending, uh, making a decision on um, further appointments to the Royal Human Relations, Relations Commission until council's made a decision as to the status of the, the commission? Uh, saying none, then that will be the decision, and we have uh, item number two P, uh, twenty twenty-five Youth Violence Prevention Program, Staying Against Violence Every Day Safe, uh, program marijuana funds. Um, I guess, uh, I guess I'll take that. This is, uh?
Oh, I pulled it.
You pulled it, that's great. Um, go ahead, Councilmember Bergen.
Oh, yeah, so, um, no, I, I support the SAVE program. I had questions on some of the funding. Um, and I don't understand why it's on consent. Again, it's an ordinance, so I thought we were supposed to have a presentation on it. There is a PowerPoint in the backup, and I have questions on the different FTEs and the funding.
Okay, uh, can we have a, okay, can we have a staff presentation? A brief staff presentation on, on number two P?
Sure, happy to do that. Um, and I cannot speak to why it was put on consent, um, so hopefully someone can help with that piece of it. Um, maybe there was a lot of items this, um, today. Anyway, so, um, this, uh, ordinance is coming before you, uh, based on the fact that this had a five-year sunset, so the funding would end in December of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we're trying to get ahead of that and renew the funding, uh, from when it was first passed in twenty twenty. The brief explanation of the SAVE program, I think you all are fairly aware of the program, but really an effort to reduce gun violence, uh, with a focus on youth. Again, we've moved away from, um, more of the prevention side, funding nonprofits, to really focus on, um, the gun violence, um, intervention program here. So, Councilmember Bergen, I assume your question may be about, um, this slide here. Um, so this is a breakdown of how the marijuana funds have been, uh, used and are currently proposed for the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, these three FTEs are a reduction in FTEs from the original six that were there, um, back when we first started the program. Um, so this is, uh, funding the, uh, Intervention Program Manager, uh, a program administrator, um, and then a portion of a, um, engagement and portion of an admin position. So those are the FTEs, there's other FTEs that are working on this program within the police department. Some of those are funded by our federal grant that we have, which is on the next slide, but I'll stop there if you have a specific question about the FTEs.
I do. Um, so you said that there's an intervention program person, an engagement person, and then an admin in those three FTEs for four hundred thousand dollars?
So, right, there's a, a, a manager, an intervention program manager, this manager oversees the SAVE program and youth violence, as well as our crisis programs. Um, that manager position, and then there's an administrator position, which does, um, oversee some of our grant compliance work, some of the different, um, agreements that we have listed here, um, our evaluator agreement, the agreements with, uh, Cherry Creek Public Schools, um, does some of our data, works with the police department and our other community-based organizations. Um, works with our case manager and things like that, and is doing more of the administrative, um, work of the program. And then we have some funding going to, um, an engagement position and some funding going to an actual admin that does, you know, meeting scheduling and, and administrative cap.
Okay, so what does the engagement person do?
They're working with our, also our community-based, um, organizations as well. Um, and I will say, um, that position is currently vacant and under, um, kind of consideration with what we do with it. Um, as we've evolved the program to fund less things of the different, uh, nonprofits out in the community, um, that position has evolved a little bit, um, and it has been vacant for, um, a few months at this point.
Yeah, I honestly don't think we should fund it. Um, there's all, seems to be a lot of overlap, and I'm also, so before you go to the next slide, which I think there's overlap that, between people doing same jobs, but the, I guess my problem with the five-year contract on this is originally it was five years for the Youth Violence Prevention Program, and that's when we had five million nonprofit supply, it was very hard to administer, and it was under intervention, prevention, and I don't know what, but, um, then in twenty twenty-three, we, we approved the SAVE program, and the SAVE program is, is a good program. It's really to identify those individuals that are at high risk, that could be involved in, um, gun violence situations, whatever. Um, so I, I think it's a good program. It's just, like, I don't understand, we would be funding, approving a budget for the total amount that includes Justice Works, Case Management, National Network for Save Communities, says Save Consultants, who are these people? So, my, I guess I'm, I don't feel comfortable with all the FTEs, I don't feel comfortable, I, I, I'm fine with the program, I don't feel comfortable approving a budget for five years. How do we know these consultants are still gonna be there? Why are we using University of Colorado program data evaluation for two hundred and two thousand when you just said someone in admin does the evaluation agreements?
Yeah, so this is what's broken down for the twenty twenty-six budget. So this is one year of
Okay.
Just to be clear. Um, and most of these agreements are for one year. We're doing one-year agreements um, with case managers, with the different community-based organizations that are providing the services.
Okay.
And so we're renewing the marijuana, um, one percent sales tax for the next five years. What we do with that and how we allocate those marijuana funds each year comes through the budget process each year and is a one-year budget. So this is what you're seeing is what is in the budget for twenty twenty-six. Um, in the current budget that council's considering with the marijuana funds, and so the renewal of the marijuana funds is just that, renewing the marijuana funds. We just wanted to show how those are being utilized for twenty twenty-six, so some of these, it takes, as we've talked about, it takes management of these different contracts, we wanna make sure they're in compliance, we wanna make sure they're meeting their performance measures, we're auditing them. There's also federal guidance and requirements that we have for our federal and state grants that we have, which are on the next slide, which are augmenting this funding. So that is part of what the, um, the administrator role is doing, um, for this program, is overseeing that, um, as well, and working with the data analysts in the police department um, on their side to be able to say, is the program successful? And that's where some of these metrics come in that are on some of the later slides, is how many people are taking, are participating in the program, taking services?
Right.
Type of services? What
So I read, I read the whole
and all that, yeah.
Right, yeah, I read the backup. Um, so that makes, that's better for me, since it's, we're gonna approve the budgets year by year, so we're not approving these specific FTEs for five years. Um, question, what is the flex fund for fifty thousand?
So that's when things are identified through the case manager, um, similar to when we have a flex fund in our homelessness fund. These are things where we don't just serve the youth, um, that's either, you know, exhibiting violent behavior or associated, we also work with the families. So sometimes this is used for other things, um, that the family needs that might be affecting, um, or creating barriers to violence for those individuals. Um, so any number of different things that could pay for pro-social events for the youth, for things like participating in sports or other mentorship programs, it might help with, um, job assistance, sometimes getting them connected to other services. Um, we've done a couple relocation assistance things when there's been a safety concern, those types of things, and we're piloting that, um, this year, and so we put a smaller amount of money into that.
Okay, um, and then if you could move to the next slide?
Sure.
And this is a grant program, this part of it, right? This funding?
Yep, so this is a two-year grant, the top part from the, um, federal government for Department of Justice, um, showing that some of the FTEs within the police department are funded by this grant, um, not within housing and community services. So this is separate from the marijuana funds, but is part of our leveraged funds, um, to receive these federal grants.
Okay, so I know it's separate funding, but do the positions overlap in their responsibilities?
They do not, so these are the strictly the law enforcement parts of the program, so, um, there's a lieutenant in the program that does the custom notifications, is overseeing the program on the police side, working with a data analyst, working with a detective, and doing the very police-focused portions of the program.
Okay, and then can we? Sorry, can we, um, reapply then once this grant, when it's over in twenty twenty-seven, can we reapply to have it reauthorized?
We can, as long as that program at the federal level through Department of Justice till like this, yes.
Okay, and then, um, one last question, and that is, um, basically if we, so if we approve this moving forward, we, are we approving the one percent to continue, correct?
Correct.
One percent out of marijuana tax monies. So what if, let's say in two years, three years, I don't know, something changes in our economy or whatever, and we don't wanna allocate one percent anymore, let's say we wanted to reduce it. Is that something that then action could still be taken by council, by ordinance, to change that? We're not locked, I guess we're, I'm asking, are we locked in?
So I would defer to the attorneys on that, I would assume they would bring in different ordinance back, so.
Okay.
Attorneys want to weigh in on that one?
Oz, are you on?
Yes, I am, it's just I can mute for the life of me. Uh, Councilmember Bergen, uh, this is House Hernandez for the City Attorney's Office. Yes, we can, uh, go ahead and change this. It has a sunset provision for five years, and it says specifically less changed by council, oh, repealed by council, so we will bring in all demands, repeal that, and then that one percent will be compiled the general fund to be allocated however you
Okay, so that clause is in there.
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you so much, I appreciate it, Jessica and Oz.
Uh, Councilmember Hancock?
Uh, two things for me, um, I wanna be sure that I'm clear on, this is for one year that we're moving forward, are we investing in another five years with this program?
So we're renewing the marijuana sales tax funds for the next five years. Um, for the purposes of the SAVE program, youth violence prevention, as it's called in the ordinance. So, we're investing in reduction in youth violence for the next five years with this, and specifically how the money spent each year would come to council through the budget process.
Uh, my, my main concern with this, it's, it seems very administratively expensive, and I would like to see more data. Uh, it seems like the balance of the kids that were supposedly being helped through this. It, it's hard for me to reconcile those two things with the amount of money we're spending administratively to the number of kids. And is this, this is the program that we're also mandating that children that are in this program through the courts must, them and their families must participate? Am, am I, uh, is that correct? It's not voluntary, it's com- it's compulsory.
Correct, we are mandating that they show up to a call-in. Um, whether they accept services or not is up to them, what path they choose, but they're mandated to at least come and hear the message, and so we have that worked out with the eighteenth, and we're getting close with the seventeenth, so are they mandated to accept services? No, it's a sort of offering them an off-ramp to services and knowing that if they don't take services, then we're going to be tracking them closely, um, through the law enforcement perspective. And
Yeah, that's still funny.
Presentation, you'll see we've done two hundred and sixty-five, um, notifications and a hundred and eighty-five is the accepted services, so we're about forty-nine percent acceptance rate, which is good for a program, um, where we're offering services, and they're staying engaged and they're not reoffending, as you see later in the presentation.
And what is your, what, what is the, um, strategy on increasing that percentage?
Yeah, so I think it's those, you know, trusted conversations and partnerships with our community-based organizations, some of them we've just brought on in the past six months, um, in really seeing, um, how they're able to connect, um, some of the violence interruption that we wanna continue and fully um, really implementing the full gun violence intervention model here. Um, I think that's where we will start to see success, um, as you have those people interacting with you.
Thank you. Mayor Jurenski?
Oh, Councilmember Jurski?
Thank you. Um, Jessica, I guess my question is, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to, um, the schools? Are we, is that money that we are just handing over to the schools, or is that going through like our school resource officers, is that investing in Aurora somehow to go into the schools, or are we writing a check to the school districts?
So we have agreements with them, again, with outcomes we're looking for, they've used it for different programs, it's a different school districts. Um, and, um, Lisa, if you wanna jump in with specifically what they're funding, happy to do that, otherwise we can get back to you. I know some of them have done like a summer leadership program specifically for at-risk youth, others have helped augment, um, you know, after-school and different programming options at the schools, so they're using it differently, and then some of it's going to the, um, to the Jack the Juvenile Assessment Center.
I think out of this whole thing, uh, I think out of this whole thing, I think that's my main concern. Um, we each seem to have our own concerns, um, but just writing any sort of a check to these school districts, um, the level of violence, um, I'm getting calls all the time um, from parents that are dealing with, with violence, um, in Aurora Public Schools and Cherry Creek, um, public school district, and obviously we have no authority, no jurisdiction, um, but their approach currently and how they are handling violence in their school, how they are handling violent juvenile offenders, um, I am completely appalled by. Um, so, I, I don't know if there's, I don't feel comfortable just writing them a check, writing them just a blank check, here you go, spend it on whatever you want, as long as it's for youth violence. Um, I would like to see that go through the school resource officers, or, um, you know, maybe, um, programs planned through the police department that we fund, that we get the five-O trailer out for, um, something like that. I would, I would like to see a different kind of partnership with the school districts, um, involving our police and getting, and like I said, bringing out the five-O trailer, bringing out the mobile library, um, doing some different things. I would like to see some youth programs like that with a, a partnership with APS and Cherry Creek versus just writing them a check and saying, here you go, because I don't think that they are doing anything to address, uh, youth violence in their schools.
Let me, let me ask staff a question on this, and that is that, uh, since this is already in the twenty twenty-six budget, um, and, uh, Councilmember Jurski has some reservations about it. Um, could she then come back in this, evaluate what's going on, uh, then come back in the spring supplemental uh, to adjust the budget uh, however she thinks is appropriate, bring it before council?
So, I think before we do any renewals of those agreements with the school district, we can certainly provide more information and have conversation. Um, and we'll hold on doing those agreements for twenty twenty-six until we, um, you know, have more conversation, and we'll be bringing those individually back to council like we always do for approval, and so you would see what is in them, and we can have some further conversation about what those look like moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further, uh, Councilmember Hancock?
I just wanted to concur, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Jurenski on this point, because it's, I need to see tangible and measured results as to the outcomes with this money that they're getting, um, that really is making a difference.
Okay. Um, Jessica, when do you think you'd be bringing that forward, uh, for discussion with council? Just the, the piece about, um, the supporting the school districts?
Yeah, I will circle back and we'll figure out when their current agreements end, get some performance measure information, um, and we can come back, um, to a study session, um, you know, probably with transition, maybe early January, if that works for you all, before we do anything for the next year.
Okay. Uh, please proceed with your presentation.
Sorry, Councilmember Bergen, did you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bergen.
You're muted.
There, sorry, um, when you bring that back in January or whenever, can you also, like, can you give us information on exactly what the University of Colorado provides for two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
During the evaluation piece, and that's required for our federal grant as well, and we can provide some more information on their scope when we come back. Um, okay, so just very quickly, I'll just run through the rest of these, um, so this is the funding component. These are the more broader description of what the services are, the first one's Justice Works, they're doing all of our case management. Um, if you remember, we had tried doing this in-house, we now, um, contract that out. Um, Hazelbrook is one of our, um, community-based organizations more focused on substance abuse. Um, again, these are the other three that we have, and sort of what their specialties are, they're all a little bit different, um, with mental health, um, therapy, um, violence interruption, workforce development, those types of things, and those are the only ones we're working with now, rather than having a myriad of, you know, twelve to twenty. Um, this is like I had already mentioned, just the number of folks that have taken services, a hundred and eighty-nine, um, of the overall two hundred and sixty or so, what we're seeing is this program's working with, um, you know, the reoffending rate at three percent, of violent crimes at twenty percent. Um, and we have one percent that have, um, died due to gun violence since the program. Um, just kind of a year-over-year longer look at, um, the gun violence fatal and non-fatal shootings, obviously this isn't the only thing contributing um, to, uh, reduction in gun violence in the community, but we do feel the youth that are engaged are not reoffending. These are the types of services that they're taking, so you can see the percentage there, about forty-nine percent, which I said is a good number of folks, uh, taking services. The types of services, the number, obviously, again, this is not just youth, but also their families, and I heard from some, that's also really important, we wanna make sure they're um, supported, and then they're on their And I heard from some youth, that's also really important. We want to make sure they're, um, supported and then they're on their way to, um, rehabilitating themselves and, um, engaging in other activities in the community that are not violent. Um, and then, um, just the, uh, demographic breakdown, um, Councilmember Hancock, you had asked me for this a few months ago. So, um, just to sort of see that, um, distribution, um, you know, zip code, the average age, um, being about 17. Um, and then, um, race and ethnicity breakdown. Councilmember Hancock, did you have a question on this one?
Councilmember Hancock.
Oh, no. Okay. All right. Um, so this is just.
I just want to encourage everybody, members to, uh, go to one of what's called a call-in where one of these individuals who, who's been targeted as, as being somebody who, uh, has a propensity for gun violence, uh, is, is in the room with law enforcement and with, uh, some of our service providers, uh, uh, where, you know, they're provided an off-ramp to say, hey, we've got, we can help you. But if you're not going to take the off-ramp, we're going to be pretty tough on you. And I, and I think they're very helpful. And then, uh, there's home visits as well, where they, where they go and visit the individual and, uh, uh, where they're living. And, uh, I'm gonna, doing a ride-along to see how that works, but I want to encourage everybody to participate. Go ahead, uh, Jessica.
Sure. So just to the question of how do we get more youth taking services and what will we do, you know, with this program? How do we see it continuing? What will the funding go towards? So this is sort of that piece. Um, we want to make sure we have some critical incident response, violence interruption. Um, when there is a shooting in the community, we have a response. Um, and again, um, you know, streamlining some of those case management. So that's all I have. So, um, the question for council is, uh, do you wish to move this ordinance forward to the regular meeting?
Uh, further questions of staff?
Mayor Turinsky.
Councilmember Turinsky.
Yeah, thank you. Jessica, thank you so much for, um, this presentation. You know, the SAVE program is something that I really believe in and, and, you know, would echo Mayor Kaufman's sentiments on this. I have had a front row seat, um, to the nonprofit, The Road Called Straight, uh, almost my entire term on council, and the work they are doing, um, is phenomenal. I hear the struggle of love, um, has, has reorganized and that they're doing great work. They're working hand in hand with, uh, The Road Called Straight. I, I just can't say enough good things about this program specifically, um, a- a- and, and very much Sergeant, um, Anna Bungart. I, you know, the work is just incredible that's being done out there. So I just don't want to, um, confuse or conflate my questioning of the previous funding with anything to do, uh, with the SAVE program. I, I would like to move this forward.
Well, is there?
Thank you, Council. Real quick, thanks. Thanks, Councilmember Turinsky. You saved us about $20,000 by don't, um, demoting Anna. I'll make her aware that we demoted her to back to sergeant from lieutenant, but we appreciate the, the caucetics.
I missed your promotion?
Yeah, you did. I just, she, she's a lieutenant now, so I just want to just make sure for the record that, uh, Lieutenant Bungart's, uh, is, is doing a great job.
She's going to hear from me that I, I wasn't invited. I didn't, I didn't know she was being promoted. She's going to hear from me.
Councilmember Gardner.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I, I'm probably going to be the only one speaking up in opposition to this. Um, you know, uh, these programs are all good, um, or a lot of them are good. And if they're so good, we should find a way to fund them from our general fund. We should not pick one industry, um, that we've decided is socially acceptable to tax at a higher rate than other products, legal products that are sold in our city, um, to fund, you know, uh, that's, uh, that's wrong. Um, these are legal products. And so I, I do not support, um, a sales tax on one specific legal product sold, um, regardless of whether or not the programs that we're funding are good. If they're so good, then we should find a way to fund them from our general fund. So I'll, I will not support this.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion? Is there any objection to, um, um, Councilmember Bergen?
I'm sorry. I actually agree. And at one point, um, in time, when Curtis Gerner and I were able to work together, um, we were going to focus on maybe doing away with that excise tax on marijuana. Um, but I, I do happen to agree with him that, um, this tax should come off of marijuana, um, in the future. If we could see, uh, if there's a way to build this into, uh, our general fund and, and, um, I, I, I would like to see that. I, I'm going to be a yes vote for tonight because this program is so spectacular. Like I said, I've had a front row seat, uh, with one organization in particular over the past four years, and I, I, I've seen this for myself. I do agree though, um, that the excise tax, um, all of the additional taxes on marijuana really should come off of it. But for tonight, I'm going to be a yes on this.
Very well. Uh, further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
I was just going to remind everyone, we do have a deficit, so it, we wouldn't be able to fund it through the general fund.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, is there any objection to moving, uh, 2P forward?
Gardner.
Uh, Councilmember Gardner, very well. Uh, uh, item number 2P will move forward. Uh, item number 3A, socioeconomic sales and, uh, services impact permit, um, Councilmember Jurenski.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, we have talked about this a lot, um, and this is kind of intertwined with what Councilmember, um, Coombs and Gardner had brought forward. And then, um, I let it be known that this was something that I was working on. Um, Trevor, do you have our presentation ready?
I do.
We're ready to rock and roll.
Right. All right. Uh, socioeconomic impact, uh, permit proposed ordinance. Uh, this ordinance, um, is designed to address, uh, at least future clustering of high-risk, uh, businesses. And we'll talk about how that's defined, um, and support a healthy community. Uh, these types of sales and services, uh, when they're concentrated, there's research that shows that they promote unhealthy products, um, predatory services. A lot of times they'll concentrate and target in, um, lower economic areas, um, areas higher in crime, um, and have, uh, you know, been, been known to be a correlation with, um, again, those lower economic areas and targeting historically disadvantaged communities. Um, and so we're talking about, uh, businesses that, that do have a role to play in society, but, but the, uh, concentration, you know, in, in particularly areas where there's maybe blight as well, um, and hindering reinvestment in those areas. Um, and discussing this with our retail development people, um, you know, we had some discussion that, that a lot of times, um, you know, some, some higher-end, uh, retail will kind of avoid areas that may have a lot of this concentration. Um, and it can create perceptions of disorder and decline. So again, uh, addressing clustering of predatory retail, um, you know, and, and, uh, reducing competitive pressure. Sometimes with these types of industries, uh, you can have kind of a race to the bottom, uh, with what services that they're offering, you know, when they, they get together, um, they may, you know, for example, liquor stores feel more pressure to, um, sell kind of cheaper alcohols or, um, you know, things like shooters and such like that and, and lower their prices, you know, in order to compete and, uh, drive, um, impacts in the community. Um, one thing we're looking to incorporate here is place-based crime prevention along with this permit. And, uh, part of this is encouraging commercial reinvestment, uh, you know, kind of goes along with the derelict property ordinance, um, you know, to encourage, uh, the retail centers to invest in them to, to, uh, bring in a variety of retail and, and higher-end retail, um, and services to upgrade there. So specifically, we're talking about, uh, businesses with negative health or financial impacts, not necessarily businesses that, uh, provide services to lower economic areas, but businesses that perhaps target them uh, with, uh, health compromising substances or, uh, financial services, uh, that, you know, are high in interest or, um, you know, for example, pawn shops with, um, high-interest loans as well as potentially being locations of fencing of stolen goods. Uh, so specific to these industries, liquor stores, payday loans, vape stores, marijuana stores, rental and bail bonds, pawn shops and motels. Um, and then late-night bars, uh, in areas of elevated risk. Uh, so we, we've created a category here discussing how we handle, um, what we call high, high-risk, um, after midnight operations. Uh, the approach in this is to attach it to the general business license to make it very seamless, um, as far as, uh, for existing businesses. So a lot of this is primarily dealing with distance restrictions. Um, there are some additional rules and, and trying to address what we call areas of elevated risk. Uh, so areas that have a lot of, uh, crime and a, and a lot of correlation with the data that shows, you know, that, that has, um, a- attracting, um, areas that attract, uh, higher crime, uh, specific, uh, uses as we correlate with our crime data. Um, so what we looked at was, uh, perhaps addressing this with kind of the streamlined permit rather than, uh, going through the zoning code, uh, where conditional use perhaps more, much more expensive. Um, you know, public hearing, this would just be more streamlined than that, um, as just a permit with the general business license, um, there. And zoning tends to be more static. Uh, we're, we're having a proposal here with what we call areas of elevated risk, which would be more dynamic. Um, so some highlights about the permit requirements, what we would include in this would be convenience stores, only if they sell alcohol, tobacco, or kind of the other controlled substances such as kratom, so on and, you know, um, so forth. Uh, then from that definition, we would exclude large format grocery stores, uh, so basically Walgreens on up, uh, to not discourage those from locating, uh, they would then be able to locate and sell these products. Um, also, this was a change suggested by the Business Advisory Board, which I think was a, a very good suggestion. When we look at the small, healthy groceries, uh, we made this change after, uh, that Business Advisory Board to exclude those from the definition of being stores. And when we look at these stores, they, they really do not emphasize, uh, the health compromising products, you know, even though they may have a tobacco license. They sell relatively, uh, small amounts of those products, uh, compared to, you know, their, their healthy products. Uh, vape shops, we define those as 15% more floor space or 50% or more sales from those types of products that vape shops and smoke shops sell. Uh, especially secondhand shops, uh, from our definition of secondhand stores, we exclude especially secondhand shops. You know, for example, if you have a comic book store that's buying comics, um, more of what we're targeting with secondhand buyers is more the pawn shop type operation or an operation, uh, that, you know, maybe, um, at high risk of fencing stolen goods or, or bringing in, um, stolen metals. Uh, transit stations, we use for reference only to kind of create some buffer around transit stations. And I'll go into more detail on what this looks like in the maps. Um, it would do that, those are not included as a, for the permitting process, because we're not going to prevent those from, from going anywhere. Um, and then high-risk after midnight uses, uh, when they're in elevated risk areas. And that's four new ones, uh, coming in. Uh, there are some steps they'd need to take when they come in, uh, to demonstrate that they're not increasing risk within that area. So as I mentioned, changes after our Public Safety Committee, we created the definition of a small, healthy grocery store, um, excluding those from convenience stores. And, uh, just continued to refine what I'm saying, refining categorization of operations as we visit these locations. Uh, I've adjusted how we, uh, categorize a few businesses, uh, as in vape store versus convenience store. So we're still, still, uh, determining kind of, is it a vape store? You know, because you see some of these convenience stores and they have a lot of, um, s- smoking products and, um, uh, paraphernalia and determining kind of where they'd fit. Uh, some terminology that's important with the place-based, um, kind of entity-wide crime strategies. Uh, it's crime prevention through environmental design. Uh, that is a well-studied, adopted strategy in regards to using the built environment to reduce the incidents and fear of crime. Uh, another topic that goes along with this is what we call risk terrain modeling, uh, which is something we're proposing as part of this ordinance to try to begin integrating that, uh, as well. And that's more data-based approach, um, to look at our crime data and the risk factors in the community to define what those areas of elevated risk are. And that's been used in a number of cities, uh, like Kansas City, Wichita's adopting it, uh, Dallas. Um, and it goes right along with hotspot policing. It actually supports hotspot policing as well and strategies, uh, with hotspot policing. That's how that's being used. Um, Police Network Investigations is more of a police-specific strategy, uh, to focus in on areas uh, that have high crime and, uh, need surveillance or heavy police surveillance. So I mentioned what crime prevention through environmental design, uh, is, and we reference this in the ordinance for some of these uses, um, when they're coming into these areas of elevated risk to incorporate, uh, some of these principles to help reduce their, their risk on the environment. Um, as far as the crime environment. So again, risk terrain modeling, uh, what that is, it's a spatial diagnosis technique. You're mapping environmental factors, uh, with risky locations. Again, I mentioned that. Uh, the creator of risk terrain modeling and the author of it talked about, you know, SEPTED's good, but, you know, it helps if you can focus in on where you're going to apply SEPTED principles, um, on those, those environmental areas with high crime risk. Uh, so this is kind of what the city looks like when we mapped it out, um, with these locations. It basically says kind of what you would expect it to say, you know, when you know these areas and you look at the Colfax Corridor, for example, you have a lot of concentration of these types of businesses. And some of your, your centers that begin to feel, uh, blighted, um, there you start to see some of this concentration with these types of, of businesses. So it starts to discourage, in theory, that, you know, um, healthy foot traffic to these areas because it doesn't necessarily feel safe. You know, if you've got just an area full of pawn shops and liquor stores and smoke shops, uh, it may not feel as welcoming and as safe as if you have restaurants, coffee shops, you know, you have a more balanced retail environment, um, that, uh, you know, is more attracting to, to individuals coming in. So, um, mentioned convenience stores, a large chunk of the category there. We have, uh, you know, the list there. I don't need to go through all of them. Uh, major transit stops in our definition, there are 13 of those. So that would be your light rail stations and a few bus stations where we have bus service with multiple lines running at least as frequent as every 15 minutes. So that's kind of what that looks like, and I'll go into some specific areas here. Um, so as far as the permit, the proposed spacing is 300 feet spacing between, um, these operations. So if you have a, uh, vape store existing and a pawn shop wants to come in, that pawn shop will need to be 300 feet from that vape store and 300 feet from that convenience store. So, um, putting some spacing so that you don't end up with the concentration that you have on East Colfax where you kind of end up, even though you have spacing between pawn shops, you may have spacing between liquor stores. You kind of end up with the repeating liquor store, pawn shop, vape store, you know, check cashing, repeat. Um, and so trying to actually keep that, that from creating that environment. A thousand feet from any extended occupancy motel, 2,000 feet between the same type of, uh, business. So that would mean that a vape store needs to be 2,000 feet from a vape store, liquor store, 2,000 feet from a liquor store. These are, again, are for new operations. Um, convenience store that sells the regulated substances will need to be 2,000 feet from another, you know, convenience store of the same model. Um, and again, I want to highlight that's specific to convenience stores that sell tobacco or alcohol. Um, wouldn't stop a corner store from coming in that perhaps doesn't sell those products because they'd be more general retail. Um, the high-risk after midnight uses do not have a spacing requirement on them. They're just some steps that they're in a high-risk area that we want them to demonstrate that they're going to add to that area. Uh, bars can, can actually really help add to a community. They can also really detract from a community depending on how they're operated uh, and what they look like. So we want to make sure that if they're going into an area high in crime, uh, you know, and they're wanting to operate specifically after midnight. So, you know, if you, a lot of these tap houses don't even operate until midnight. Um, but, uh, you know, if it's a bar, they'll, they'll probably want to operate after midnight. So what are they going to do to not, um, increase the crime in the area? And then not having these in retail centers that are exhibiting blight or with 50% or more vacancy. Again, encouraging the retail centers to invest in upgrading those centers rather than just taking and, uh, putting a lot of these uses into them. And we have seen that happen in some blighted centers. Uh, so the, again, the areas of elevated risk, we would determine that by risk terrain modeling, which means we need to actually get that modeling. Um, high-risk after midnight uses, we'll consider them in those zones, but they'll be grandfathered in. And then the new ones, uh, will need to show, uh, that they're going to incorporate those SEPTED factors and, uh, not increase risk. And then we actually use SEPTED as a mitigating or aggravating, uh, factor if there's violations. as mitigating or aggravating factor if there's violations at the location such as, you know, any type of public nuisance activity specifically. You know, and and you know, upgrade your location. So when we talk about SEPTED, what does that mean? Well, yeah, a lot of it's just showing that the area is cared for. The liquor store on the left here, after we'd caught them serving a very heavily intoxicated homeless individual. We also required him to upgrade the frontage on that. So it will look different today with more natural surveillance with glass and inappropriate signage. But you can see it kind of run down and and kind of a detraction if you're walking through the area and based on kind of the clientele coming and going from that liquor store, you know, it was kind of perhaps the area traffic that that we may have some concerns about. This is also on East Colfax by the Fox Theater. This is a pawn shop that has all three of these units and as you can see, they've kind of left it looking somewhat somewhat looking almost like it's vacant, you know, with all the the windows boarded up. So again, this permit tries to encourage them to upgrade these facilities, especially if they're new coming into an area. So permit requirements and the potential for revocation, if there's a pattern of neglect code violations, public nuisance violations, you know, such as serving, you know, it's the heavily intoxicated homeless individual. And then following operational plans for the new ones, if they're in an area of elevated risk, the permit would go away if they discontinue operations for greater than six months. So they wouldn't be grandfathered in at that location anymore. We would, upon approval of this, automatically issue permits to existing businesses at no cost. Initial issuance that just goes out, be assigned to the general business license. We are proposing that to fund risk terrain modeling, we could charge a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, works out to about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars on biannual general license, business license renewals. And we may have a funding source for at least the first year of that. So that could be potentially put that fee out more than one year before we started charging that. So this is kind of what it looks like, you know, the Colfax Corridor here in a thousand feet there, and I've made some adjustments here as far as re-categorizing one of the smoke shops to convenience store. But you can see there's about, you know, just in this corridor, you can see five pawn shops in there. Those are the kind of the brown circles. You can see multiple smoke shops, you know, including within a thousand feet, multiple convenience stores, extended occupancy. And then interestingly enough, over in the Colfax Havana area, we have thirty percent of the city's check cashing payday loan businesses in an area where we had a lot of issues with open air drug market. And interestingly, there has been some signs that there is some correlation between those alternative financial service providers and open air drug markets and especially when located near a major transit stop, which we have all those risk factors there at that location. So this is the Havana Gardens area. I kind of put this in there for contrast because you can see that with this healthier retail center, there's a lot less of these uses there. Liquor stores, again, they they have a role to play, not saying they don't belong, saying, you know, that that concentrating them may may have an unhealthy impact. And so here you can see that these things are pretty much spaced in accordance with what the ordinance would require if they were new. You've got, you know, twenty-three hundred feet between the liquor store and the check cashing. So well more than three hundred feet, you'd have three hundred feet between the check cashing and the liquor store. The liquor store is maybe a little too close to the convenience store. But again, no impact to existing businesses. I'm just using this purely as illustration. This is Peoria in Mississippi. This area is having a number of challenges as we know. We have Safeway here is announced as closing. We have the Walgreens in the upper left-hand corner that has closed. And then that center on the lower left is looking pretty rough with blight. And as you can see, you've got a number of these type of uses in there and kind of are beginning to lose a lot of the other businesses in that center. And so you can see just different scale here. You'd have twelve hundred between those two smoke shops, convenience stores, and then, you know, also in the upper right-hand corner, that kind of that section of the shopping center has had some issues with violence and, you know, we've had concerns here with regards that that these stores may be selling tobacco products to minors here as well. So kind of just gives you an idea of what
Excuse me, Trevor?
Yeah.
Pardon me. Can you clarify which stores you had incidents of violence associated with?
So kind of in this parking lot here, this this has had, I remember there was a I think there was two shootings last year in that parking lot. And then, you know, we've had I know that liquor store has had a robbery. We did find in that that large ninety-nine cent store, it had a lot of drug paraphernalia in it, actually, three three of those businesses in the upper right-hand side did. So you kind of, you know, you kind of started to see some open air drug market activity there as well. So not necessarily specifically something we tied with any business, just that it happened in that area. And this is one of the police's hotspot areas as well. I did add Hampton and Chambers because I, Councilmember Lawson, I know you'd sent some comments about some concerns on this area, and I noticed when I was out in this area, it's got multiple smoke shops kind of concentrated there, liquor stores. So you can kind of see twelve hundred feet. I mean, there's three smoke shops there and even that that yellow dot is a head shop that had a lot of drug paraphernalia in it when we were in there and nitrous oxide and such. And so just can kind of see the concentration in that area as well. Visual reference. Southlands, again, a healthy retail center here. And there, I know there's a smoke shop, but I think it might be off to the right-hand side somewhere. Oh, it's down on the lower right. So this had, you know, you see the lot of spacing between these types of uses out there in that center. But the very much more healthy retail there. So I just use that for contrast. So with that, that's my presentation.
Questions of Staff, Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, thank you, Trevor. I guess I'm a little bit confused on the permit. Did you say you said everyone who has an established business automatically gets the permit? And then, okay, so I think I saw on one of the slides if, because I'm working actually on a retail continuation of the retail strategy that I had introduced last couple of years ago to address blight and the vacant you know, retail centers and strip malls and so forth. So my concern is or my question is, if they are in poor condition and you issue them a permit, then if you, then would you have the ability to then condemn them? If like that one picture where the bars are on the window? Like, why aren't they shut down?
Yeah, so the permit, you know, we we tried to be, I guess, mindful of it, and I guess that's maybe a question for council too of of not kind of immediately impacting or shutting anybody down, but giving kind of, you know, grandfathering in. If there are nuisance activities in that area, we use that as a or nuisance activities associated with that business, we can use that as a factor along with the fact that the place looks like that as an aggravating factor to terminate that permit. There is the code violations, which, you know, in that image, some of those are code violations. So if there's a repeated pattern of that, it does allow for us to to go in and terminate that permit.
So current, so currently, are we able to do something about those businesses?
Yes, I I do believe so. The the, well, I'm going to qualify that. The with the liquor store in particular, we had a violation and we use that as leverage to kind of force them to clean it up. There were code violations in that image you saw, including the Plexiglas windows. If they have excessive window signage, that would be a violation. The signage was in poor condition, so there were code violations there as well. It's a little unclear when they just purely block out the windows without signage as far as how much clear window footage they need in there. And I might look to my planning friends to to
Well, if I if I misstated any of that. Here's what, here's because I know we're going to be short on time and we've got the H, the housing video for fifty minutes. But is there any way to bring this back? I I have so many questions and I just want to make sure we do it right. I think the concept is is good. But I also want to make sure that, like, have we done outreach to businesses at all?
Mayor, can I jump in real quick and answer some of these?
Okay, Councilmember Jerski.
Thank you.
As a sponsor.
Thank you, thank you. So we have done some outreach, absolutely, especially to the event centers. And and this kind of started with the event centers, realizing that the event centers were hosting all of these parties with all of this alcohol, and there were shootings and murders and all kinds of stuff. And they weren't, they didn't have to have any type of licensing, no liquor licensing, no nothing. So rather than come in as 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 too much of big government, this is kind of a, it's kind of a catch-all. We're not looking to shut any current businesses down, any businesses that are currently within the the spacing, they will not have to move. These licenses will be grandfathered in, meaning they will be transferable. So if any of these business owners sell their business, they will get to sell it with this permit and they will not, they still won't have to close. So it would only be for for new businesses coming in. But but like Trevor said, with some of these businesses and the way that they look up and down Havana and up and down Colfax right now, I mean, they look completely closed. And really, the only tool that Trevor has right now is to send code enforcement and just bury them bury them in in code enforcement violations, right? And and we've kind of seen in the past how that doesn't necessarily solve the problems. So that's why that's why we're kind of coming up with this spacing and comparing shopping centers that are thriving to some areas in the city that are not thriving. With that, I don't know if you have additional questions, but I am happy to pull this. And if any of my colleagues have any questions or anything that they would like me to take into consideration, if you would just email me by the next council meeting, I'm happy to take them into consideration, happy to have a conversation. But certainly, as you can see, some of these businesses, we have got to, we have, they have to at least look open. And and we can't just keep coming after people with code enforcement violations.
Right.
Let me just say, we don't have enough time to do the U D O. We're going to have to shift that to the next meeting, unfortunately.
Okay, you're gonna upset a lot of people.
Yeah, I know, but we don't have a choice. And so let's go ahead and continue this discussion.
Oh, okay.
Until at five fifty, we've got to move to a public comment listening session. So I see Mayor Protem Sumberg.
Thank you. Couple of questions and points. Convenience stores, that sort of concerns me. Would that be a new seven eleven proposed at a at a particular location? Which seems to be a respectable business, which sells wine these days, and of course, a lot of a lot of beer. Would that be included?
It would, and we I would note that one of the things that they've seen in risk terrain modeling, we've seen it here in the city, is even with seven elevens, we've had kind of issues with increased crime around the gas stations. Now, it doesn't prohibit them entirely because we've been specific convenience stores that sell these regulated substances. That's what would require the spacing. But it is included in this ordinance.
Okay, because those types of stores can really be a service to certain areas. Whether it's a remote area like where I live or or in a more urban setting. And I my mind goes to Colfax and Havana, and that intersection just went to hell, right? You had desirable businesses there. Walmart and Walgreens, you have a Little Caesars, these types of businesses are so desirable. And when that was going down, I deliberately went out there, I spent hours walking around, observing, speaking to employees, speaking to the police officers. You know, we had different police leadership at that time. The police were frustrated about not being able to do community policing, proactive policing in that area. Staff members of Walmart just gave up and looked demoralized at the fact that individuals, the same people every day, and this included the Walgreens, could walk in and walk out and steal things without consequences every day. And that the open air drug use, the open air drug sales around those areas was real, it was a, excuse me, a crime prevention and intervention problem. And I, you know, I tried to get a state senator over there to, you know, to look at some of the consequences of permissive drug laws. But I mean, it's a case study and you can still have these desirable businesses and and things just go downward so quickly. There's just one thing to keep in mind.
Mayor, can I respond, please?
Oh, yes.
So Councilmember, Mayor Protem Sumberg, so three hundred feet on the convenience stores, that may make it so that we can't have an intersection with a gas station on all four corners. But maybe on alternating corners, you know, just just depending on that. So it's not for that, it's not something that's real extreme.
Okay, Councilmember Gardner.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Trevor, so you've used the word unsavory, undesirable, talking about behaviors, air quotes, with some of the taking taking place around some of these businesses. Are the behaviors and the the unsavory behaviors, as you've called them several times, are those things already against the law, such as open air drug use, prostitution, public intoxication? Are those things already against the law?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm a hundred percent not supportive of this. We need to let the market work and just simply telling these businesses where they can and can't go is not going to all of a sudden lead to something more desirable. That's the word that's been used tonight lots of times, desirable. The government is should not be in the business of deciding which types of businesses are and aren't desirable. These businesses sell legal products to adults. And, you know, if there's crime happening around these businesses, then we should address the crime. But simply creating another law, when individuals have already demonstrated they will not follow the law because they're breaking laws, does not address the problem, does not address the root cause. And instead, what we are doing as a government is saying, picking and choosing winners and losers and saying which businesses are and aren't desirable. And, you know, for the small business owners on our council, what if they come for your business next? What if they come and say that your business is undesirable next? When this doesn't solve the problem because it won't, because prohibitions never work. And so I am adamantly opposed to this.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to that.
Oh, Councilmember, as a sponsor, Councilmember Jerski.
Thank you so much. So speaking as somebody who was actually considered a non-essential business owner and had every single one of my employees told that they were not essential and lose their jobs for roughly a year while every other store in town was packed. I think I can weigh in here a little bit about picking and choosing winners. What I think it comes down to is the data and the data that Trevor showed. You know, in in these very blighted shopping centers, I have at Hampden and Chambers. I've owned a business there for roughly ten years. I have watched that intersection just completely die. And 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 I can tell you why. I watched business after business after business move in and then business after business after business move out. So I watched it real time. Every business is essential. There is a place for every kind of business. But the government already did come for my businesses, and that's exactly why I ran for council. So I know exactly how it feels to be considered and to be called non-essential. But I think what happens is when you have a lot of these types of businesses in certain areas, it promotes, it helps promote additional criminal behavior. As Trevor has seen many times, he walks into some of these stores and they're selling illegal drug paraphernalia. Paraphernalia, they're selling illegal drugs. So this permit is just a tool to help not to say that these businesses have to close. In fact, we're going to give them the permit for free the first year. Nobody has to close. They'll be grandfathered in. If they sell, it sells with it. But to to say that there isn't data to show that when a certain amount of these businesses move into a shopping center, I've watched it real time. I've watched it real time. Entire shopping centers become blighted. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure, you know, the rhyme or reason, but I can tell you, I've watched it real time. And to Trevor's point, he is finding And to Trevor's point, he is finding all kinds of illegal drug paraphernalia. Um, in in these businesses. And rather than going around and, you know, I'm I'm sure he's done something to some of these businesses. But this will have to hold them more accountable. And I don't think there's anything wrong with spacing out some of these types of businesses. But just as a reminder, the government already did come for my businesses.
That's what I was.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I'm not sure. Sorry, give me one moment.
Oh, you're muted now, I'm sorry.
Um, give me a moment. Okay, so I'm not sure if we're going to have time to cover all of this. I have quite a few questions. Um, but the uh risk terrain modeling, um, I'm concerned about. How we're utilizing that, right? Are we? What are we doing to make sure that whatever assessment we're making there is not a discriminatory assessment? Um, the other question I have is with respect to bars. It sounds like bars are kind of be giving, being given an exception. That they're only sometimes going to be looked at and sometimes not going to be looked at. Um, and so that is very concerning to me that it seems like we're saying, well, all these other businesses are unsavory and bad, but bars can actually be pretty good. Uh. Period. Um, and then the other piece is um the gas stations, which was mentioned. Um, and namely, not just the convenience store aspect of gas stations. But um, the environmental degradation and pollution associated with gas stations. So it's not clear to me, when we're talking about businesses that impact health and safety of communities, why we're not also considering. Uh, businesses that have demonstrable pollution impacts, not only to the community as they exist at this time, but also to the future development. Potential of those properties. So those are the things that I'd like to raise um uh for consideration. And with however much time we have to answer them.
Very well.
Mayor, I'm happy to to talk about that. Um, yeah, and Councilmember Coombs, you raised a good point because um, you know, not just with gas stations, uh, but but with uh like um. Cleaners, dry cleaners, um, you know, when when a dry cleaning place closes. Um, there's a lot that has to be done environmentally, you know, for 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 a dry cleaners um to become something else. I guess, Trevor, you know, a dry cleaning uh place, you know, we didn't necessarily consider. Uh, full transparency, we didn't necessarily, Councilmember Coombs, consider um environmental uh hazards in this. I I don't personally, you know, think that, you know, there's a lot of seven eleven, there's a lot of convenience stores that don't have gas pumps associated with them. Anymore, um, you know, that these would would fall under. So not every convenience store anymore has a gas station. We also did research and pull out twenty-two convenience stores um that. Are actually considered like healthier, healthier markets, um healthier grocery stores. They're not selling um any alcohol, tobacco, they're selling food, um, you know, some. Um, immigrant owned markets, local markets. Um, so we did pull those out, we did exclude those. And what was said about bars is if a bar, it wants to open in one of these high. One of these high risk areas, um, Trevor's getting very good at um. Putting a stipulation on their liquor license that potentially they may not be able to stay open past midnight. Um, so it, you know, if 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 that is the case, then then that is the case. Um, but. Bars, bars weren't necessarily excluded. The thing is, is bars already hold many licenses. Like I said, these um, the event centers are having all these huge events. With a lot of alcohol, heavy alcohol that have turned to shootings and murders, and they've never even had to have a liquor license. Um, so bars are already very, very um regulated. We have to hold multiple licenses, city licenses and state licenses. And I I don't necessarily think that bars are being excluded from this. Um, it's just going to, I think, depend, Trevor will really start to look at what area they're opening in.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I'm going to have to uh uh adjourn the meeting. Uh, and we'll then continue this on on the next uh study session or whatever the sponsor uh desires to do. I think that this is an important issue. And I think when these businesses are concentrated, uh particularly in low income areas, I think they really serve a predatory purpose. That's adverse to the interest of the city. Uh, with that, uh, the council, the study sessions adjourned. And we will reconvene uh at um six o'clock uh into the uh listening session.
Okay, can I have this on the next study session, please?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the U D O.